Gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting an order today for our Wednesday, May 8, 2024 special meeting. Welcome everybody here today. Everybody that's in the virtual world also, thank you for coming. Our first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing on the school budget. I'll ask the board if they have any comments before I open the public hearing.
None at this time.
All right. If the board has no comments, I'll open the public hearing. The first person I have on the sign-up sheet tonight is Maurice Johnson.
Gentlemen, it seems we end up here every year on the same topic with the same problem, and that is the school's budget. This year's request, as submitted, reflects an increase of $1.7 million of additional county funds over last year's budget. Just as an aside, it kind of looks like the school board is seeking to have the county backfill the no longer available COVID dollars. Numbers look familiar, but that could just be me. Last year, we filled this courtroom and the one next door with, for several information-filled hours. Eventually, the two boards later managed to agree to form a joint finance committee, but not before one of the school board members said the quiet part out loud. The point made: If you don't have children in the schools, you don't have a dog in the fight. And that point was not lost on the tax-paying voters. Today, given that auditors identified overspending in every category, even after a 16% year-over-year increase, it seems unfathomable that an additional $1.7 million in county funding has been asked for in this current budget. Last year, other county departments and agencies found huge savings in an effort to mitigate any potential 23% real estate tax increase. Of course, in the end, the schools did end up getting a large chunk of that. This year, it's the school's turn to do some belt tightening and maybe a little bit of soul-searching. And this evening, I'm absolutely certain that we're going to hear facts, figures, and a few extended consequences from a number of presenters, many of which are going to reach the same conclusion. Let's make sure that the teachers and their benefits are covered, but do not pass this budget as presented. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next person on the sign-up sheet is Edgar Dolman. Good evening.
My comments are really based on comments from the General Assembly report on education systems throughout Virginia, and they had several recommendations. One was the school division should review staffing decisions to come in line with declining student enrollment, and I don't see that here. School division should ensure that funding focuses on staffing in the classroom rather than non-instructional costs, and again, I don't see that here, as you will find out later. Better data is needed for more transparent funding, but it boils down to divisions need stronger funding formulas based on student numbers and individual student educational needs. But those needs need to be quantified and measurable, and we don't have that here. The revised student-based funding model should accurately relate inputs to outcomes and be tied to those student outcomes so schools are incentivized to perform well. But we do not have measurable student outcomes. We have historical data which shows that student performance is not really improving, even though the budgets are going up. And that's true locally, it's true statewide, and it's true nationwide. So we have a problem here. And my recommendation would be that school budgets need to be tied to measurable outcomes. Here we are, some number; here's where we want to go, some number, some quantity; and here's how we're going to measure how we get there, and next year we will be here, and the year after that we'll be there, and so forth. If we're not tied to that, then we continue wandering into wilderness and spending more and more money. And to that gentleman's remark that we don't have a dog in the fight because we don't have kids in school, we do have a dog in the fight because we own property here. And more and more of it is going to school budgets, and less and less of it is going to the development of the county as a whole, and the county just ain't in that great shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolman. All right. Next person on the sign-up sheet is Edward Rittenhouse.
The school board administration, the superintendent and her administration, for what I'm concerned, they're unfit to be working there, doing the job. They're not doing the job. The appropriation of the funds have not been spent properly. They can't account for the monies that have been given to them. And we're, as taxpayers, we're putting the bill. Proficiency, the rate of students have dropped over the years. You've got less students, they want more money. Proficiency has dropped in every category, eighth grade reading, math, science, English. All of that, proficiency has dropped, but yet they want more money. I'm tired. If they can't do the job, they need to leave. And the school administration is a shenanigans lord, I'm concerned. I'm tired of the taxpayer. I've been here most of my life. I'm retired, I'm on fixed income. Every time you turn around, the county wants more money, the school board wants more money, that takes money out of our pockets. It affects everybody in here. They're wasting our money. I'm tired of seeing the money being wasted. Our education for our kids have dropped. We're not getting any more intelligent, they're getting dumber because of just the system that's not doing the job. As far as I'm concerned, we need to be able, and cut the budget. Don't give them any more money, cut the budget. And when this audit comes in for the final school budget, find out where the money's gone. You've got monies you can't account for. Why? These are supposed to be educated. There's a doctrine, education. And they can't figure out where the money's going or what school. As far as I'm concerned, if you can't account for the money, find out where it's going, and if there's been some illegal thing going on, then somebody needs to go to jail. That's the way out from the record.
All right. Thank you. All right, next person is Lynn Stewart.
I have a presentation, Lynn Stewart Lutzberg. I have a presentation I'd like entered into the record. I think these are enough copies for everyone, including you and Drew. The school board budget isn't just the school board budget, it impacts the county as well. So whatever problems there are with the school board budget becomes a county problem. As you know, the school board budgets continue to escalate, the number of students continue to decrease. The Northumberland School Board consumes an extraordinary amount of county resources. If you turn to page two of the presentation, if you look at it a different way, the 2023-24 budget for the entire county, the school board budget consumed 53.5% of the entire county budget compared to every other department and agency at 48.5%. So the school board budget consumed more county resources than every other department and agency combined. It's a county problem, not just a school board problem. A 10-year look at school board revenues using auditor's reports shows that since 2014, Northumberland County has contributed $105.7 million to the school board. An additional $68.5 million was contributed by state and federal agencies. The caveat is that those monies did include emergency COVID funds. The total funding for the last 10 years for Northumberland Schools is a whopping $174.3 million. That number includes about $9 million that has come in to the school systems year-to-date through April. If you turn to the next chart, you'll see a 10-year expenditure chart with the county funds being that yellow green, the state and federal funds being blue, and the ADM overlaid on top. You can see the amount of county funds versus state funds and how the student population decreases. It isn't just the student population in Northumberland County that's decreasing, we're losing residents. We have the largest number, the second-largest number of folks over 65 years old, but in all of the working age groups, we're losing population. And when we're compared to the surrounding counties, we have the lowest number of school-aged children among those four counties. There's a, the next set of charts is census data that shows you graphically what the census numbers show. And you can see annual total payroll, we're on the very low end of the stick. And what that means is we don't have a lot of tax revenue to draw from. Between 2020 and 2021, we lost 4.6% of our workforce, which was the largest loss among those four counties. The next chart is just the Northumberland census data broken down by age. You can take a look at that at your leisure, I'm not going to discuss it because we just talked about it. And yet, Northumberland is the most generous by far when it comes to funding the school budget. We fund 60% of the school budget compared to all the other counties, which is very much on the high end. And the data shows that $92.9 million has been allocated to instruction, the instruction line. Actual annual instruction expenditures have never topped $13 million with the exception of last year when federal COVID funds were available. The data also shows that instruction was underspent by $445,000 plus some change, and that in as prior years, non-instructional cost per student continues to go up. If pre, if historic pre-COVID expenditures on the instruction line have never exceeded $13 million, and the student population is decreasing, and instruction was underspent in 2022-23, then the school board's 2024-25 request for $16 million for instruction is unjustifiable and the county can't afford it. More money is not the answer. The five-year, $92.9 million county instruction investment has not significantly increased Northumberland County students' reading and math abilities. If you turn to the next chart, it will show you the difference between allocation per student and allocation for instruction per student. And you can see that there's a gap between the total allocation and the amount allocated for instruction. Since I went back 10 years to look at the amount of revenues that have been contributed by the county, I also went back and looked at 10-year test scores. I chose eighth-grade students because they had been in school for eight years and they only had four years to graduation. The two charts on the left-hand side of the page will show you past proficient rates 10 years ago and what they are now. Math proficiency rates, what they were 10 years ago and what they are now. And the chart on the right is an eighth-grade reading pass/fail rate chart from five, 10, and 15 years ago, broken down by race. Both black students and white students had a higher pass rate 15 years ago than they do now after $105 million investment in the school system. I went back through the Virginia superintendent's annual report, pulled up eighth-grade reading scores, broken down by race, for reading, writing, math, and history. Those charts are on the following pages. The Virginia Department of Education published and delivered a report to the General Assembly titled "Competitive Teachers Pay." Some conclusions in the report are directly related to the school board budget requests. Looking at the highest and average, the highest and lowest average salary divisions, there was not a high correlation between average salaries and reading and math pass rates. Looking at math and English pass rates among divisions with the highest and lowest per pupil spends, the lower divisions averaged lower pass rates, but in some cases, those divisions still had higher scores than the highest-paying divisions. That's significant because salaries alone are not impacting teacher retention. Of course, education of our children is important, but are county tax dollars funding teachers or administration and overhead? One of the other findings of that report was that a lower percentage of SOQ funding was actually going to classroom instruction and instead was being diverted to administrative and overhead costs. One of their recommendations was that the money be reallocated back to direct student teaching and removed from those overhead and other administrative costs. This is a situation that is a statewide and probably nationwide problem. It's not specific, specifically just a Northumberland issue. However, we are in a unique position of being able to redirect those funds at a county level and benefit our students. Mr. Dolman has already discussed the next steps that were the conclusion of the General Assembly report. I'm not going to go through those. However, if steps are not taken to curb spending, the county will be looking at a $19 million bill in 2029. And if you think this is a ridiculous premise and could never happen in Northumberland County, think again. The current school board budget county asks is only $7,000 less than the entire 2017 education budget. That budget was funded with state, federal, and local funds, and we're looking at that amount just for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next person is Martha Williams.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address the board.
Good evening.
I am here to request your support for the proposed NCPS budget. The budget supports a step increase of 1.25% for employees and covering the increase in health insurance. The $1.7 million increase is mostly due to the increase of the local composite index, and that alone was $1.5 million. It's also my understanding that the General Assembly has not approved a final budget as of yet. However, the most recent recommendation, if approved, will bring $500,000 plus in state revenue to our county. As far as our student population, I'm the principal of Northumberland Elementary School, and I am having an influx of students steadily. My population is going up, and you would be surprised how many requests I get for out-of-county children to come to Northumberland to learn. In addition, we do not have hardly any staff turnover. I interviewed a young lady from another district in the past week, and I asked her why she wanted to come to Northumberland County Public Schools. Her reply to me was, "I can't figure out what you're doing over here because you all don't lose anybody. You must be doing something right." To address our scores, I really can't tell you what they were 10 years ago or 15 years ago, but I can tell you that we have been in the green. We have been recovering from COVID. We have been green-lighted across the board in accreditation. The only place that we took a slight ding was in attendance, and we have been working hard to rectify that, and it was only in one school. Kids are coming to school, kids are learning, children are changing, the demands that children need are changing. You have children with emotional problems, with disabilities, with educational problems, and we are teaching them, and they are successful. The last I looked at the surrounding counties, they can't fill their positions. Northumberland is not having that problem. Our children are making gains, and our teachers are working hard. I ask that you consider this increased step for our teachers and that you cover their health insurance. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I apologize.
Sorry. What are the reasons you're hearing that other children are wanting to come to North umberland?
Our program, our educational program, our special education program, the fact that all of our teachers, just about every single teacher in our school is certified. There are a lot of teachers that are out there right now, a lot of schools are having to hire, that are job switchers, that are, they don't have degrees in education, but they're trying to transition over, so they get a provisional for three years. After the three years, they move on to something else. They're not dedicated educators, and the majority of Northumberland County staff is and has been quality licensed professionals. And I think that's what they're looking for.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, any further questions?
Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Let's see, next on the sign-up sheet is Karen Piker.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you for its National Appreciation Week for teachers, and it's also Public Service Appreciation Week, so thank you for everyone here who has a career in public service and to our educators. Second, I'd like to share that you can actually give the teachers all the raise they need and fund their insurance without increasing the budget a dime. So all the information and statistics I'm going to give you are based on published documents that are available on the county site, the school site, or the Department of Education in Virginia site. And thank you again for the school board and the Board of Supervisors this year publishing a transparent line item budget. It's really helpful when you go back and do analysis, which some of us really like to do. So I'm a little concerned that we're finding that the eighth graders aren't pass proficient in scores. This isn't related to accreditation. The accreditation of a school isn't based on the pass proficient rate. And just for plain language, if you're not pass proficient in reading, that means you can't distinguish between fact and opinion in English. So that is one out of three of our students can't distinguish between fact and fiction. They can't skim a paragraph and understand the contents. 50% of our eighth graders, and I'm not understanding why the eighth grade scores might be a problem, but I can learn more about that, 50% of our eighth graders can't put integers in a row, and they can't compute a surface area. How many of us in our daily lives need to be able to understand how to compute a surface area? And we wonder why our employers can't find people to work. So we've got a serious problem, and money is not the answer. Last year in June, I stood here as I was very confused because I couldn't understand where the money was going, why it wasn't there, et cetera, et cetera. I've spent the last year looking at all the documentation, all the county reports, all the school documentation going back as far as I can go, state reports, and also the stuff available on NCSB Watch. And the one question that still cannot be answered is how much money the school needs. What we can answer is how much the school is asking for. That is not a direct relationship with how much is needed because of incremental budgeting. So the answers that were given to the Board of Supervisors clearly indicate that the school is taking the estimates from last year, the expenditure from last year, and then plusing them up for this year. In some cases, it's known because of insurance, in other cases, it's estimates. January 8th, the school board meeting, the budget quote-unquote that was passed was a list of expenditures. Not a single question was asked by the school board about how much revenue was going to be needed or available to cover these expenses. So the budget comes to you guys on February 29th, and guess what? It doesn't balance. It has to be redone. I find it shameful that we have a county where our school can't do basic math. And I grew up in a rural county, I graduated with 80 kids in my high school, so I know from whence I speak when it comes to rural communities, we're not all in that case, in that situation. Revenue covering expenses. Again, you can go look at the school board recordings. Those meetings are now recorded, not a single question between January and now about where the revenue is going to cover the expenses. What was going to be cut? You ask a question, COVID, COVID funding. Mr. Brand, you've been asking about this for a couple of years now, if you go back and look at the recordings. This school budget bakes in the expenses when we had COVID revenue. When the school leadership was asked when the expenses were going to be decreased based on the decrease in revenue, the answer was, we couldn't anticipate that. How could you not anticipate that? Don't you control the budget? Don't you know what those monies were supposed to be for? The school hired extra employees. In the July meeting of last year, July 13, 2023 meeting, the school announced that they were hiring extra employees, temporary, part-time, to help with reimbursements. Well, we're caught up with reimbursements now. Are those people going to be cut? Probably not, at least not in the documentation that was provided by the school. The budget requests over $2 million for building maintenance, even though the board approved an analysis from the school that said we would actually save money in that category if we cut the service master contract and brought people on board. So you've brought 16 new employees on board for which you have to pay healthcare, you have to pay all expenses. That budget in 2022 was $1.8 million. Hmm, $1.8 to $2 million? That's not a savings. If you take a look at the audit reports, Schedule II of the county audit reports, which are all found online, thank you, Luttrell, you will see that since 2017, from 2017 to 2023, there has been a $9 million surplus in school funding. Let that sink in for a minute. The schools had an extra $9 million. Per the schools' answers to your own questions, there was an extra $650,000 last year, and the audit report states that there's an additional $2.7 million that still needed to be requested in reimbursements. You can absolutely cut 3 to 4 to 6 million dollars out of this budget without touching a teacher raise or medical care. You can do it. Take a look. Twice, the school had to correct the budget they submitted to you. They consistently asked for more money than is spent in instruction. If you look through the historical figures, basically kind of what Ms. Stewart said, until 2023, the school never spent more than $13 million and change in instruction, going back to 2016, 2015, 2014. All of a sudden, now you need an extra $3 million? Well, if you also look back at the Board of Supervisors documentation for every appropriation request that's come in from the school, if it hasn't been a grant, it's been move money out of the instruction line into something else. I worked in budgeting for a long time, and one of the things that we used to do was underfund one line and overfund another, and then be able to say, we wanted to move money from here to here. The Air Force used to do it. They'd build everything on an Air Force base except for the runway, then they'd come in and say, oh, we need more money for the runway, and they'd get it. You need to take a closer look. I applaud the Board of Supervisors for digging into this budget. I applaud you for asking every single one of these questions. If people haven't read these questions, you need to. They are very enlightening. The school board overspent in five of six major categories last year. The audit report identifies clear overspending. I thought y'all passed a budget resolution, and there was also a state code that required anytime there was overspending, you had to come to your appropriating body and ask for the money to be moved. Now, in the school's defense, they said they didn't know they had overspent, the school year ended July 30. In this answer, they say they didn't know they'd overspent until November. Did they come to you in November and say, we need to move some money? No. What they said was, they found the money, it's in this document, I'm not making this up, they found the money to cover the overspending by using supplemental funds from the state and the feds. How many of those supplemental funds were supposed to be returned back to the county in the form of reimbursement? That $2.7 million that's still outstanding for 2023, I'm assuming it's been recouped right now, how much is coming back? The $649,483.21 that the school states was surplus in 2023, did the county get that back? Before another dime is spent in the school system, we need to get better tracking. As Ms. Stewart mentioned, this is a statewide As Ms. Stewart mentioned, this is a statewide issue. You can fund, this Board of Supervisors can fund teachers and insurance without increasing the budget, based on a $9 million surplus over, hmm, 2017 to 2023. How many years is that? Can I do math? Hmm, six, seven? Hmm. So based on a $9 million surplus, the school has money. It's how they're spending it. And if the teachers don't get their raise, and if they don't get their insurance paid, that is not going to be on the Board of Supervisors. That is going to be a school board decision in how they choose to manage the money that they're getting. It's not going to be on you guys. I encourage you to start looking at zero based budgeting. We would not be having this much of a conversation if we actually knew what the schools needed and we didn't just take the budget every year and add up to it. If we're going to do zero based budgeting in the future, you need to start looking at it now, and it gets down to what is actually needed. When the school board, when the school leadership is telling you that they're overspending in one category because they have to buy appreciation gifts for the school board, I totally appreciate the school board. I'm not sure we, I want to have my county dollars buying appreciation gifts over something else that should be directly impacting and allowing the teachers to do their job. Let's free these teachers up to do the job that they want to do, so we can get these test scores up, so we can keep some people in this county. I dare you. I dare you to counteract anything that I'm saying. It's statistically accurate. Statistically accurate and verifiable based on reports that are public.
All right, hold on, hold on. Don't be interrupting.
So I ask the supervisors to look at a realistic budget. The county is having problems. I volunteered to be on the Economic Development Commission because I wanted to try to solve this problem. I'm not going to solve it myself. I don't know how to solve anything by myself. That's not my job either. My job is to try to bring people together to solve problems, as far as the EDC goes. We're not going to have people moving, now, if the schools, the schools are great. I love the fact that 74 other kids want to come to the school. Let's get the money from those kids. Let's make sure we're getting paid for those kids, and our taxpayers aren't footing the bill. I know there's some money that comes into this county, but we've never gotten an answer for how much. So do the right thing, make sure the teachers are taken care of, make sure the insurance is taken care of, and make sure every student is taken care of. That does not mean you need to raise the school budget. You can go back, and the LCI is not a reason this budget is going up. If you take a look at the local composite index, if you actually look at the data, yes, the LCI is changing. Yes, the amount of money from the state and the feds is going, the state is going to decrease. Guess what baseline they're using? Last year, when they got $10 million in combined funding from state and feds, because all the COVID reimbursements were coming in. If you go back another year to the, I don't have my glasses on, if you go back to the 2022, 2021, funding from the state and the feds, you will see, even though the LCI was lower back then, the amount of funding is equal. The LCI is not a reason that this budget is going up. The data do not support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, questions, sorry. No, good.
I don't have any.
No questions, all right. All right, next person on the list is Shelby Brooks.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Nice to see you guys.
Yeah, same here.
Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Myself and Latasha Lee are co-presidents of the Education Association. We are here in favor of our school budget. I can't speak to problems that are had, I can't speak to what can be saved. I'm going to tell you, that is above me at this point. I would like for you all to consider specific things when you think about this budget. The demands, the demands that the children place on us today are not like it was five, 10, or 15, 20 years ago. Many of you at this probably were raised just like I was, in the same type of school system. Today, we face things that I would have never have dreamed as a teacher when I became a professional teacher that we would face. Things like mental health issues, things like defiance issues, family issues, learning loss, learning disabilities, some of that learning disabilities from trauma that these children have had. Our society has changed in a great deal, and I know that the funding is high. I realize that. I teach government. I know how much a local funding is compared to state and federal. I will say one thing, our general assembly, especially our Virginia Department of Education is looking, I hope you all know this, they are looking and they will be restructuring funding for schools. That's one of the priorities. So I'm hoping we will see help in the future for localities. I can tell you more than once in this room, I've heard you all say, we get mandates from the state, and guess who gets to pay for it? We do, as a taxpayer, and you all have to figure that out. That's some of what's happening in the school system. For some of the things that I just said about these children, when it was our time, we came along, we didn't have that. Today, we have to make sure every child succeeds. And they have a right to, because sometimes it's not, it's nothing that they are, it's their fault about how they are, but we have to solve the issues. And we are solving those issues in our schools. That's why a lot of students want to come here. We, our teachers are dedicated, our staff is dedicated, they want every child to succeed. I cannot tell you how many I've helped walk through, walk across the stage at graduation, because I'd mostly deal with seniors. I want you to consider, when you think about this budget, the children and the staff. I know that you all have a difficult choice to make. I would like for you to take and make sure that the children and the staff are the people that are, you are considering. Anything you want me to add? I'm going to wrap it up. Also, one thing I would like to point out, too, and I know that no one, not everyone understands this, some of the data that they're looking at for eighth grade, I want to point a difference out. When you are looking at testing at the middle school and the elementary level, I, as a parent, can say, I don't want my child tested. If that child doesn't test and they opt out, it is considered a fail against the school. And people do not understand that, but that is an option parents have, and we have a lot of, I actually have ninth and 10th graders that come, and I do remediation for World History, and they're like, I'm not going to take the test because I can opt out. And I'm like, no, you're in high school now. In high school, they can't opt out. So when you see 100%, 98% pass rates at the high school, that's our actual numbers. I can't say for sure what the numbers they're looking at are true pass rates because of the fact that parents can opt out today. And it is something that parents do in the lower grades. Okay? Yes?
Why would a parent opt out of their child being tested?
They don't think they're ready. We have students who have a lot of test exam anxiety. I will tell you, I'm a traditional elementary school teacher, that's where I started, and I taught two actual SOLs. I taught Virginia Studies and I taught math. And I will tell you, it was very stressful on these students. And at that time, parents couldn't opt them out, but today, they can opt them out.
Does faculty try to influence those parents, the guardians, to have their child tested?
They do, they do. But you know, it's still, as a parent, you have a right to decide these things. And you know, we can't, we can't change that. I'm not saying all the numbers are wrong, but I want you all to think about that, especially at that middle school level, which is eighth grade. Yes, sir?
Do you, do you have any numbers at all as to the percentage of students that do in fact opt out?
I don't have those, but I'm sure if you ask the school board and the school board, they could tell you.
You don't even have an estimate, perhaps?
I don't. I'm sorry, because I'm mostly at the high school level today, but I, I mean, I can tell you the experiences, I know, I know I've spoken to multiple, you know, we have a lot of conversations, teachers do, and that is one of the things that many middle schoolers do not understand when they come into our high school, that you, there is no opt out, you must pass the test, and it ties you to actual graduation. Because you literally have to pass, you have to pass a math, you must pass reading, you must pass writing, and you must pass a science and a history in order to graduate today. It's part of the process. Okay? Excuse me. Numbers can be skewed, yes? You're talking about for the opt out? Yeah, for the opt out, in the lower grades. And you know, this is something that if you all want information on, I'm sure that they can explain to you better about how many students opt out, how many, and also, you have to consider this. I have to tell you, I'm not an expert at this. I do know at the lower levels, you, once you fail, you do not get to take the test over again, but at the high school level, the state has a law that if, let's say, I actually have been doing this for the last five days, I've been remediating ninth graders on World History I test and World History standards. I had students who missed by one or two questions. So they, for five days, I've been pulling them for 45 minutes each day, and I've been hitting what they missed, because I get a report of what they're weak in. And I have been remediating those students along with two of my other colleagues, so, and we do the same thing in every subject area, because we want them to be successful. And sometimes it's, especially those ninth graders really aren't taking the test serious because they don't understand the consequences, and we have to walk them through that. And then we get them to that successful. And that's the whole point of, and they, you see that growth. Whereas you figure in those lower grades, they don't get to, we don't see that growth. You can, you can see, they can do other growth assessments, especially at the elementary school, and I know they do, too. I know Martha back there, our principal, will show you those growth assessments. So you literally can see how these children have grown through the year, through that year. Am I correct, Martha?
You are correct.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, data shows that we have become powerful as well.
Yes. And you know, that's the other thing, and I'm sorry that I'm taking more time.
It's all right, I want to hear.
Yeah. I just want you to know that we do still have some learning loss at the high school, and us teachers, we are steadily talking every day about what can we do different? How can we schedule students different? What can we do? Because of some of the things they did lose during that time, and we're steadily working on that. So I do want you to know that how hard our staff is working to make sure, and as she said, the elementary school is starting to show that they are getting out of that learning loss, and that's going to trickle up as we go through. Okay? And I want to point something out about gifts. I don't know about other gifts, but we gave gifts to our supervise, our board of, school board members out of our own money. So I don't, I hope money didn't, gifts, money didn't get crossed, okay? But I wanted you, we wanted to point that out to you. The Northumberland Education Association gave gifts to our board members. We do that every year, and that does come out of our own personal money. Okay? Do I have any other questions? Nope. And I'd be happy to help, we'd be happy to talk anytime you want. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else on the sign up sheet, but anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak tonight? I got, hold on just a second, Patrick. Dr. Blizzard, how you doing?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Dr. Lind with Blizzard. Come before you to encourage you to move forward with the approval of the school budget in the best way that works for the needs of the school in the coming fiscal year 25. The conversations tonight, appreciate all the perspectives, but we must remember that we don't live in a vacuum. We live in a ecosystem of education where in fact, most jurisdictions, the largest part of every jurisdiction is the educational budget. And the issues of COVID don't just affect Northumberland, it's affected everybody across the entire nation. Talked about learning loss, decline in enrollment, those are issues that we're seeing in every jurisdiction across this nation. But Northumberland, as we have heard tonight, even with these challenges, still surpasses others in the northern neck as a superior school system. Challenges exist in spaces, and we're, you're working through that through your audits as we see, and working through the continual process of continuous improvement in the county. I do encourage you to hear the story tonight, that Northumberland is superior. You heard Principal Martha Williams from the Northumberland Elementary School speak about the idea of the turnover in this county. People come to this county. This county has the highest standards of academics in the region. Now, what that means compared to counties outside of our region is another conversation, but in terms of where we live here on this, the northern neck, we are a superior system, and we are making sure that we're continuing to improve what's happened. How can we improve it? By continuing to improve the retention of who we have here in this, in this district as teachers as well as staff. And part of that work is the timing of the budget being approved. Contracts for other jurisdictions have been issued across the entire northern neck. We have heard about it, all the way into across Millipans, even towards Essex County, where they've just got theirs issued just in the past few, past few days. And we ask ourselves, how can they approve their budget? And the General Assembly has not approved their budget, but we're waiting for General Assembly, that can't be the issue. We have to move beyond just being stalemate, some move to actually getting the work done. So I call you to consider expedited approval of this budget. The statute 15 dash two, 15.2 dash 2506 has a reference inside of it for what's called for tonight's meeting, has a reference inside of it for a seven day waiting period. However, the problem is it references Section 15.2 dash 2503 as the prescribed timing. The timing is not prescribed inside that statute. So I encourage you to consider how to expedite the process, getting the, getting the budget approved as soon as possible, and if possible, consideration for tomorrow night during your board meeting pursuant to ultimately Section 15.2 dash 2503 of the Code of Virginia. Thank you.
Question?
Dr. Blizzard, hold on a second, please.
What good, in your view, would it do us to approve that budget tomorrow night?
Thank you, I forgot to mention. So the challenge for us right now is the school system, as we talked about in our conversations with Joint Finance Committee, the schools' last day is next Thursday. Right now, the issue is that we historically have, in the past one, at least two years, maybe three years, have had contracts to be issued once teachers have already gone home. I remember, when I was in the system, I got an email over my contract in June, late June, and the school had already got out at least two or three weeks earlier. We want to see what we can do to get these teachers their contracts to improve retention. Teachers right now are uncertain as to what's going to happen. And Northumberland, teachers in Northumberland are recruited actively by other districts because this is the openness right now. So we think the ideal thing would be to get the approval, so to allow the school board to go back and to figure out what adjustments need to be made, if justice are necessary, to get the contracts out in the hands of the teachers by early next week ideally.
What's stopping the contracts from being issued now?
It's depending the approval of the budget by the school, by the Board of Supervisors. And the, I believe it was the, the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I believe it was, there was a suggestion that the Board of School Board could approve based on the federal and state appropriations, and the Board of Supervisors can be separate. I don't think the Board of School Board is going to move forward with that type of recommendation that you can have with them, but I don't think that's going to move forward that way. So to do a part here in the county to bring it all together. Recognize that even in our development of the Joint Finance Committee, we did state that it is, that contracts will be issued with the, basically, the provisional clauses based on state appropriations, as you know, state appropriations as part of the approval process of the budget as well as the contracts themselves.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Blizzard. All right, anyone else like to speak?
I have someone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, come on up.
Very briefly, gentlemen, as I'm sure you detected from the tenor of this meeting, the taxpayers in this county are extremely disturbed by the never ending round of budget increases, particularly at the school board level, that gets reflected in their tax bills every year. They go up, and there's really nothing else that you can do except raise real estate People are also concerned with the progress on the forensic audit. Now, we know from everything we've heard tonight that somewhere as much as $9 million is unaccounted for. We have heard that there are certain funds, like the Cafeteria Fund and parts of the educational educational fund, keep getting rolled over year to year and not returned to the county, which they are required to do by law. So there's a nine million dollar accounting gap in the numbers you've been given. This should be a matter that is addressed by the forensic audit. And I trust they will because if they don't, they've kind of missed the vote on the whole thing. If... I think until the results of that forensic audit are brought before the board, it would be a grave mistake, bordering on dereliction of duty, to approve a budget before you've got the real numbers. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, please.
Ms. Booth, good seeing you. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I think there are just two things I would like to speak to. So it's very interesting to me that comments in the public keep coming up about how we don't return the funds and there's nine million dollars that we have. I think that the public needs to understand that we never got those funds. Like, we never got those funds. Those funds go directly to the Board of Supervisors or to the Treasurer's Office, and then they're appropriated for us to spend, right? There's no money for us to return. The Treasurer's Office still holds all that money, so there isn't any money for us to give back. We just know we can't spend anymore. The school nutrition fund, all that money is sitting at the Treasurer's Office in the bank account. The schools have, I believe the last statement came in, I think there's about twelve thousand dollars in the local cafeteria fund, and as it gets up, we keep transferring money over. That's all the money we actually have. We don't... Everything else gets approved by the Treasurer's Office and is held by the bank through the Treasurer, not through us. I just want to make sure everybody understands that because clearly there's a misconception about how funding actually works. Thank you.
Ms. Booth? Ms. Booth? Will there be any funds returned to the county this year?
Any unexpended funds?
Unspent funds?
So there... There could be. So right now, we're kind of right on track for where we should be. And we've been monitoring that as we go. And one of the things that we're trying to do, so you all know about the S.R. grants, we still have three of those open, and they all expire September thirtieth. Those are all reimbursing... Based on reimbursements. And what we're trying to do is because those funds are expending, we're trying to figure out what we can move around so that we can spend those funds and not county funds. So we're going to try and use all of that federal money, but because of that, there probably will be money that we don't spend that was appropriated by the board. And that's what I was trying to explain at a previous meeting, that it was another thing that people don't understand. So the last few years, we received money that has been reimbursed. So it's not like we've gotten the money, except for a few things, like the school construction loan and the food money. The rest of it, as we spend it, if it meets the criteria put... Placed in the grant application, then we can get that money reimbursed to the county. So for a lot of things, we haven't needed to use some of the county money because we were able to get it reimbursed through some of the CARES funds. All of that money ends September thirtieth, and we're still hoping to spend it all. We're hoping to spend it all by June thirtieth, so then we would still be getting money back because we're sure we'll still be filing for reimbursements. But we won't have any of those funds for fiscal year 25 because there aren't any more S.R. funds out there.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Booth. All right. Anyone else like to speak?
So I want to address a few issues that have been brought up today. The first one that I want to... My name's Dave Carron. I'm on the school board, District Five. I ran for the school board because I too want to work with people and I want to make changes. And I believe in a budget that has accountability. So I'm going to say that right off the bat. But there are a lot of factors when you're looking at a budget that you can't put in a line item. You cannot put in a line item that teachers are worried that they're not going to get paid because they don't have a contract yet. There's reasons why people work and stay in a job. The first reason is because they like the job. The second reason is they believe in what they're doing. And the third and the last reason is the funding that they get for doing that job. When we talk about teachers' loyalty and what makes this county so great in terms of their teacher pool is the fact that they're a cohesive unit and they work together. And I can speak because I've worked at other school districts, and I know what I've seen in those districts and what I see here. There is a group of teachers in this division that believe in what they're doing, and that's why there's no turnover. That doesn't mean that there is in everybody's mind. When I was running for office, one of the things that I would talk to people about is I ran into teachers that are in my district, and I... And the biggest question was is why do we have to wait till June or July to get our budget when every other district in the county gets their budget and some in April, some in May? Why do I have to wait? My life is so undecided. It causes me so much anxiety and so much stress. And that's real for people, especially people that have children. I think the second thing that I want to bring up, there are... There are things that you're not aware of that happen in the school division. Do you know that the special education rate in this country is at fourteen point six-three percent, I believe is what it is? The federal government has recognized that educating special education students, and that's up from... Please, somebody fact-check my numbers. That's up from, I believe, nine percent in two thousand and seventeen. So the federal government has recognized that it costs... What it costs a general education teacher, I mean student, to be educated, and then another fifty percent on top of that. That's not reflected in the budget. So when we're talking about increases, and if there is a nine million dollar budget, that's over six years. So you're talking seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Somebody check my math.
One point five.
There you go. So my... My point being, there is many things in the budget that aren't addressed. I too am a taxpayer in this county, and I too believe that we should be held accountable for what we spend. The issue isn't about bringing people together by making accusations. When I sit here and I listen to what's going on in this room, I'm hearing a combative attitude about the school board. Let's talk about the forensic audit for a minute. I think it's a great idea. But everybody thinks that's a forensic audit for the school board. It's not. It's for the county. And there are, I think... I think it went all the way down to you or Veeve on what the audit is looking at. It's not just the school board, it's all the county and what's wrong. A forensic audit is conducted, and you can look this up, typically conducted when they feel that there's criminal activity taking place. So that's what they're going to come in and do. A procedural audit is what the county does and what the school board's done in the past to make sure that we're following all the procedures and trying to determine that we're following those procedures. So yes, sir, whoever said it, yeah, I'm looking forward to the forensic audit too because I want to know if there was criminal activity. And like one gentleman said, those... That person should be held accountable. There's no doubt about it. But I don't know that they're going to find that. I've reviewed the budget for the last couple of years. I don't have all that time on my hands. I have another job as well. So when you're looking... When you're talking about that forensic budget, there's two things you've got to remember. It's not just against the school board, it's a budget of... It's looking at the entire county's budget. The third thing I want to talk about is when we're up here talking, and I heard the phrase tonight about you don't have a dog in the fight. I wasn't here for that meeting. I don't know what context that was made. But I really feel for the people that are paying taxes and are on budgets. I feel for them. I understand where they're coming from. I too am in a limited budget. I'm retired. I do work, but I'm retired. And I understand how they feel, and I think that's very important. I think what the problem here is, and there's been a lot of adversarially-based comments for over a year that I've been watching this, is that people aren't talking. I don't think the school board's talking to the Board of Supervisors like they should. I don't think the Board of Supervisors is talking like they should to the school board. I think that we need to have better communication across the board because that's the only way we're going to solve our problems. We can go on like we're going, and we can keep going the way we're going, but it's not going to resolve the problem. The way to solve a problem is you identify the problem and then you work the problem. And like Ms. Pika said earlier, can't do it alone. Communication has to become better across the board. If it's true that fifty-three percent of the budget is the school board budget, then fifty-three percent of our time talking about this Board of Supervisors budget or the county budget should be with the school board and recognizing those problems or those deficiencies that we have and allowing the school board to identify those problems and give explanations like I gave to you tonight about the sped. And that's only one of them, and I'm going to stand up here and go through the whole thing. But I think you make a better decision when you have more knowledge. And I just feel like if we have better communication, all of us are going to have greater knowledge. I honestly don't know what your issues are that you have to deal with. I have no... No idea. I know what the issues are at the school because I'm looking at the budget, but I don't understand where you're coming from either. So I'm not pointing fingers. I'm asking that we act as a collective group and start communicating better. And you know what? That includes the community, it includes the retirees, it includes everybody else that has, as they said, a dog in the fight. That's all I have to say. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Is... We keep... We keep hearing about the teachers' contracts and all. Is there a code or is there some type of stipulation where the school board has to have a budget in place before they can issue contracts?
I don't know if there's a statute that covers it, but I can tell you, if I had a business and I gave my employees a contract every year, and I said, you're going to make X amount of monies every year, and then I say to my employees, I'm going to give you a raise next year, but I'm not going to do the contract, so you'll just take my word for it that I'm going to go ahead and pay you that money? How would you feel as an employee?
I'd like to know what I was getting, but my...
Absolutely. So would they.
Right.
And they want to know how much they're going to have to pay out of their medical insurance, and they're going to... They, you know, all of those are factors and, you know... And, you know, when you look at a teacher, and I've only been a teacher for fourteen years, I did budget too. And there's a lot of angst with teachers because they have SOLs to deal with, they have pass rates to deal with, they have budget issues to deal with, they have their salaries to deal with, and then they have a family, and they have to deal with all those issues, but like many of us do. But I think it would be really, really, truly unethical for any of us to ask anybody to work without a contract. I just don't... I can't envision that in my mind. Like, I'm going... You know, we have laws. The reason we have contracts is because people did this in the past. Oh, I'll pay, and then they didn't pay them. And then we're in court, and then, oh, do you have any evidence? No, I don't have any evidence. Okay, so now we're in contracts. That's why we have contracts. So I don't blame anybody for not... For making a decision, whether it's positive or negative, I'm leaving, I'm staying, or whatever, because I don't have a contract. You can't blame somebody for that.
One item, sir, that I just want to make a comment on, talking about the forensic audit. As a member of this board, I voted for that audit.
Thank you.
And I would be here to tell you that if any type of fraud or something of that nature was to be showed up, I would be highly distressed. I'm not looking for that. I don't expect that. I have great pride in our school board, in our teachers, and everybody there, and myself personally. The rest of the gentlemen can speak for themselves. I'm not out of here looking for fraud because I don't believe it's there.
I don't either. But I just wanted the board and the public to be aware of the fact what a forensic audit is intended to do.
Well, it does that plus others.
It does. But that's the main goal of a forensic audit. They're typically brought in, and you can look it up, they're typically brought in after there's been some kind of suspicious activity and we need to look, I think there's criminal activity involved. That's when the forensic audit...
That's not the case here.
And I don't believe that's the case here.
That's not why.
But I... I think that people are looking at nine million dollars, and what Ms. Booth already said... Thank you. We didn't get that money, but people are thinking that money was like taken or stolen or something, and that's why we're doing the forensic audit. And I don't believe that was the intent of this board.
And I don't believe that's been said to this board in any way, shape, or form, speaking for myself.
That has not been said.
Well, I'm not making any accusations or anything. I'm just saying... I'm just saying what the facts are that I, as I know.
There is a state code. Title fifteen-two, it's twenty-two point one dash nine-three, says the governing body of a county and the governing body of a municipality shall each prepare and approve an annual budget for educational purposes by May fifteenth or within thirty days of the receipt of the county or municipality of the estimates of state funds whichever shall later occur.
I just want to close and say one thing. I think that we're heading in the right direction because the Board of Supervisors asked for more time, and the school actually prepared the budget earlier. I was not part of that budget process. I was only part of the approval because I got elected in January. So I think that's a step in the right direction. I think the economic committee is a step in the right direction, but we've got to stop flinging the words around and start solving the problem. And if the problem is that we're spending one million, seven hundred thousand dollars more, then that's the problem we need to solve. And stop like making accusations across the board. Just work. Just work together. Solve the problem. Apollo thirteen, identify the problem, you solve the problem, and you go home. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. All right. Who else would like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight? Is that many of them? Anyone want to speak? All right. I'll ask it one more time. Anyone in the virtual world like to speak on the proposed school budget? No one else? All right. Since we don't have anyone else, I will close the public hearing. I thank everyone for their comments tonight. I thank everyone for coming. Even if you didn't speak, you were here to listen, and I think that is always good. Everyone needs to have all the information they can, and I will speak... And I will speak for myself here. I've learned a lot tonight from everybody here. So I am glad we had a good chance to talk tonight. All right, thank you all for that. Our next item on our agenda tonight are the county administrator items.
Yes, sir. Mr. Willard had submitted some information. They had identified five additional manholes that need rehabilitation down at the sanitary district. And these were originally not identified because on the plans is what they were going from when they originally were trying to account for all of the manholes. And when they got in the field, actually Prism is on site this weekend for the next couple of weeks to rehabilitate these manholes. And when they got on site, they noticed that on the plan, the lift station was not located where it was identified on the plans itself. So they do have five additional manholes that they would like to address and rehabilitate. It's 48 vertical linear feet, a total cost of $12,960. If you remember back in December of last year, the board did approve the amount for Prism to do the remaining portion of what they thought were the remaining portion of the manholes at that time in the amount of $78,450. So this would be, if the board approves it, an additional $12,960 in that he believes would finalize all the manholes.
All right, is that 48 linear feet per manhole altogether?
It's all together.
All together, okay. All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Or does the board want more information?
Does the ARPA funds take care of it?
We are currently using the ARPA funds for the other set, and we would anticipate using the ARPA funds for the remaining portion of that.
So you've got enough to cover the $12,000?
We do. We need to be cautious because we are getting to a point that we are still looking at the middle high school septic system. And also, there's some cost possibly associated with the lab down to the sanitary district that we were looking at using for the... Using the ARPA funds for.
But we do have the funding.
The lab portion has not been committed yet, so we do have the funds on this side.
Okay. I moved that we move forward with the repairs using the ARPA funds.
I got a motion to have a second.
A second.
All right, I got a motion to second. That we move forward with these repairs using the ARPA funds. Is that correct? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those against? All right. Next item.
Next item I have is Northumberland is under an obligation to have a building appeals board. We currently do not have such a board. However, under the Code of Virginia, it does allow for a locality to have a memorandum of understanding with another locality that does have a board of building appeals. And before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding. And I've been in contact with the county administrator in Lancaster County. They do have a current MOU with Richmond County. And they said they would look at this, entertain the idea with the understanding that we would work with Lancaster County to have the board of building appeals. I'm not sure if that's something that the board wished to move forward with or how you would like to proceed.
So everyone had a chance to read the document, and it was in your packet?
I've got a couple of questions. What would the cost in Northumberland County be if we went into contract with that board at Lancaster County? Is it on a per basis, per usage?
That would be something I would need to work out the details with the county administrator in Lancaster. And that, I think, is partly addressed in the document. I'm not sure if they would do that just based off of per meeting that we would participate in, if it's per site. I'm not sure. This is at the beginning stages. They would not be able to meet on it until May 30.
And I guess we're considering possibly creating that type of board here in the county. When was a board of this type needed before this occurrence?
We have not... As long as I've been with the county, we've not needed one.
Never remember having need for. Mr. Long, you remember anything? You've been here longer than anybody.
No.
That's when I said I don't remember anything. Or any time, not anything, but any time that we needed a board like this.
I'd like to see...
I don't know how much the cost is going to be. Does the board want to find out some rough idea before they vote? Or you just want to go ahead and buzz?
I'd like to get more information.
Get some more information before we vote.
Could you... Luttrell, could you do that and hopefully have information by tomorrow's meeting?
I can try, but what kind of information? Well, sure, but what kind of information does the board wish to...
Just a ballpark of what they would be considering charging. You know, if it's... Say it was a... Say that... I'm just going to take the numbers, nothing. Say it was $300 a day is what they estimate it would be. That's close enough for us to get by. Or it was, you know, whatever the dollar amount is. Or if it was a one-time number.
All right, I'll reach out to the county administrator.
Yeah, okay.
I think this would be, if we could get the details worked out, I think this probably would be the better way to go since we've never had a need for this and to invest a lot of time and to get people involved into a board that would never be used. An MOU and having it in place and someone having a board already in place probably would be the way to go.
You also got to think that once you select a member, they have to go for training. So you can't select a member and get them in place in 30 days. Nothing you can do about that. And then you're going to have to keep them on board. And how often are you going to have to appoint them? You appoint them for a five-year term or a one-year term or whatever, four-year term?
That's why we need to just follow through with this and get some information.
How soon would this case go before that board if we went into a contract with them?
That would be something that they would have to determine when they would meet.
How pressing is this issue that needs to go before this board is what I'm asking, I guess.
I mean, it needs to be heard as soon as possible.
Did you get a phone call today?
No, I got one a few days ago.
I got mine too today.
Plus emails.
I think Jimmy got one too.
You'll be getting one. You're not going to be left out. Neither are you, Jim. All right. All right, if you don't mind doing that, find a ballpark. That's all we're asking, just a ballpark, so we kind of know what we're walking into. And, you know... Always helps to know a little bit. And I know Lancaster will be fair with us.
Yeah, I'm sure it's just going to cover their cost for the member to go to the site.
That's all we're asking. Just a rough idea. Nothing set in stone. Just a rough idea. That's all we ask.
I'd rather see it done in another county anyway, so we won't be accused of any bias.
Well, you won't have bias that way. You're certainly right.
That's right. If it doesn't go that way, you know that's probably what's going to come down the tubes.
All right, the... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, I was going to move on to the next...
No, we already move on.
Okay. Didn't know we had submitted requests for proposals for engineering services. Need to set up interviews. The board had wished to be part of those interviews. Does the board have any dates or times that you would wish to consider that, those interviews?
First thing is, how many interviews?
We have six.
Six. How much time you want to allow per interview?
How many?
45 minutes?
That's up to the board.
30, 45?
30, 45 minutes? We've got six.
You say 30?
I know we can't do them all in one day then.
Some people like to talk a lot.
Yep, we can cut them all.
Head them off at the pants.
All right.
Can we add one on the 15th?
What kind of dates y'all got?
I was thinking the 15th also, Mr. Long. We're already going to be here for a budget work session. Maybe we could knock out a few of them before that.
Yeah, May 15.
May 15?
What time we get started?
What time y'all want to start, gentlemen?
The budget work session is at 5:30 that day. How many do we want to do? Three?
I believe that's two minutes. Do two?
You said you got six of them, right?
Well, we try to get three at one time.
Boy, you've got a budget work... We've got a budget work session, right?
Got a budget work session.
Just bring you some more snacks.
That nice dinner that you've been so used to getting.
We need to start... We're going to do that, we need to start early then.
Well, we can start our interviews earlier.
Yeah, that's fine.
If that's all right with the rest of the board. I know some people work, some people don't.
I work every day.
What's a good time for you, Mr. Long?
I'm kidding you, Mr. Long, you know that.
2:00 or 3:00 o'clock.
Oh, 3:00?
What are we thinking of allowing? How much time? An hour, 45 minutes, what?
I'm going to say 45 minutes would be more than enough time.
Great, plenty.
I think it's more than enough, and that would... It might... Well, y'all comment, you think...
They're coming in here to tell us what they can do, right?
30 minutes, man.
30 minutes is probably enough time.
I think so too.
30 minutes is enough time.
All right.
Well, there you're getting down to where we can knock all six of them out in one day if it's only going to take 30 minutes apiece.
Well, you're going to need little breaks here and there and stuff like that.
What time we want to start? 2:00 or 3:00?
What y'all think, gentlemen?
If you start at 2:00, you can do all six.
I'll work around whatever y'all want.
Well, start at 2:00?
And do all... Try to do all of them.
2:00 PM. Wait a minute now.
You know, you getting up by then? You're to bed by then?
I have him a bowl of Cheerios.
And we need to let them know that it's 30 minutes.
The only thing I got on the 15th, I got a Citizens Advisory Council meeting with the college.
What time was that?
That's 2:30. And that runs about an hour. That's the only thing. Now, y'all want to start before I get here?
What time?
That should be up to you.
I can sit in the truck and do the meeting. I don't have far to go.
Let's go on and do it if you're okay with it. Can we do it? You all right with it?
What's that?
You want to do it 2:30?
2:30?
2:30 is fine.
2:30 on the 15th?
Wait a minute now. If we start at 2:00, we can knock them all out at about 5:00 o'clock and have 30 minutes before our next meeting.
Yeah, let's... Damn, I'm sorry, 2:00. Let's start at 2:00.
2:00 PM?
All right, we can start at 2:00.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can be here for probably one...
And you may miss one.
And I may miss one.
So we're talking about on the 15th, right?
I can just step out and do what I got to do. It doesn't take me too long.
May 15th?
May 15th.
2:00 PM?
Be 5:15, 24, at 2:00 PM.
And if Luttrell can let these people know that they're going to be limited to 30 minutes, might...
30-minute time for them.
30-minute time, right.
And we need to lie probably just a few minutes in between, so they're not meeting at the door.
And all this is assuming that all six of them will be able to be there that day?
Assuming.
So we may have another time adjustment.
We will probably have another time. All right. 2:00, gentlemen. Good enough. We'll allow 30 minutes apiece. It's tada luck you can take here, all that.
We will get that scheduled, yes, sir.
Yeah, see who will be able to come. I doubt everybody will make it.
Yeah, we'll check their schedule.
Yeah, I just doubt that. You have anything else?
Not for open meeting.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237-11829, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary are the county administrator and assistant county administrator as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section 2.237-12F.
So I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed meeting. Thank everybody for coming, and you are welcome to stay and come back.
That the Northumberland Board of Supervisors returned to public meeting and certified by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Still move.
Got a motion and a second? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long? Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Haney, aye. Now, what action do you want to fuss?
It's up to the board if you all want to move forward with the reassessment or if you all want to think about it further or...
What do y'all think?
I'm sorry.
Just you want to talk about housing for the reassessment?
No, this is the actual contract for the reassessment.
Probably need to move forward with that contract.
I don't think we need to wait too long.
No, we need to move forward. I'll make a motion that we go with the DePierce and group at the price of, I think it was $22.50 per parcel.
All right, I got a motion to have a second.
Second.
Got any other discussion?
And just confirming, that is $22.50 per parcel, and that's without a bond?
Without a bond, correct.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor, say aye. Last other thing is Drew. Check with Suvanah about getting a reduced price on that. See if they will just... You can talk to them right on the phone and see if they will reduce it. Tell them. Trim it up a little bit because we're getting poorer and poorer down here. Knock off some would be all right.
If they want to set up a call with you, is that okay?
Call them anytime. Hello?